We'll have to find out. All right, we're ready?
I'm ready.
You're ready? Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting, March 5th, 2024, and this meeting is officially called to order. May I get a roll call, please?
Councilman Lewis?
Here.
Councilman Botford?
Here.
Councilman Roberts?
Here.
Councilman Enman?
Here.
Councilwoman Weiss?
Here.
Councilman Barret?
Here. If you can join me, stand up with a moment of silence. And we will have the pledge of allegiance by our district attorney, Colin Sims.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. I would like to move resolution number 2024-11 to the front, a resolution of the Covington City Council appointing Samuel Jaberga as the interim councilman for District E. I am so very proud and pleased that he has agreed to do this. I hope at the end of his term, he is proud and pleased to have done so. Is there any public comment? Having seen none, as there are in council comments. Then I need a motion to accept.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
I need a roll call.
Councilman Botford?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Enman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Weiss?
Yes.
Councilman Barret?
Yes.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes.
And with that, we would like a swearing in if our city attorney could rise. And since Sam's wife is not here, the lovely Jimmy Enman will assist with the festivities.
I, Samuel Jaberga.
I, Sam Jaberga.
Do you saw him swear?
You saw him swear.
But I will support.
That I will support.
The constitutional laws.
The constitution laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the constitutional laws.
And the constitution laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge him for form.
Discharge him.
With all the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
In sanctimony, our city of Covington councilman for District E.
As city of Covington councilman for District E.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Next order of business, we are pleased to have our district attorney here for Washington Saint Tammany Parish's, Mr. Colin Sims. I would like Mr. Colin to come on up and address the council and the voters. I understand there may be an election coming up that may be a topic, but we certainly welcome you, sir.
I may be ready for it to be over with. Thank you so much for having me. I appreciate the invitation and allowing me some time to address you. My name's Colin Sims. I'm the acting district attorney now and running for district attorney. I am from Mandeville, lived here my entire life, obviously leaving for at times work and in school. Graduated from St. Paul's High School, attended Mississippi College on a leadership scholarship to play football ever so briefly. And then I met my beautiful wife. We've been together since we were 19 years old, and we've now been married for 18 years. I attended Loyola Law School, and at 25, I became a prosecutor. My wife and I have three kids, 16, 15, and 13, and this is where we wanted to live. When I started my career as a prosecutor, I started at the Orleans Parish District Attorney's Office, and I commuted from Mandeville, where I learned how to try cases. By the time I was 27, I tried approximately 40 felony jury trials, charging everything to arson, murder, rape, burglaries, armed robberies. There's not really an offense that I don't think that I tried in front of a felony jury in conducting trials. I think I've lost two cases in 18 years of being a prosecutor. Hung up one other one. But I learned how to do the job. And in New Orleans, you quickly learn if you have a passion for it or not. You either burn out quickly, or you move on to do something else. I loved it. I loved teaching it. And in New Orleans, you learn from someone who had 10 minutes more experience than you did, and you always trained each other, and you learn from trial and error. At 27, I became an assistant United States attorney, becoming one of the youngest assistant United States attorneys in the country. And there, I had the opportunity to kind of really learn, hone my skills, learn how to apply the rules of evidence strategically, learn how to conduct investigations. Our job as federal prosecutors was to go shoulder to shoulder with law enforcement and work in parallel to make sure we had the best work product possible to present in front of a federal grand jury and ultimately a jury for trial purposes. I specialized in gang cases, organized drug trafficking and money laundering, public corruption, and child exploitation cases. I've charged people all over this country with child abuse, child exploitation, production of child pornography. I've ripped people from other countries and prosecuted them. I've prosecuted prosecutors. I had wiretaps in the DA's office in Lafayette, had to prosecute people who were not engaged in appropriate conduct, even as prosecutors. I prosecuted law enforcement, sorry, boys, firefighters, priests, pedophiles, gang leaders, you name it. I have stepped in, and sheriffs, and prosecuted them because the law doesn't care. But I've developed an expertise in doing that. I think I've done 56 different wiretaps. I've prosecuted guys that were responsible for killing 100 people over a 10-year period across the lake in Harvey, a gang called the Harvey Hustlers. I won the FBI Director's Award nationally for criminal case of the year for that singular category in the entire United States. I've also received the Metropolitan Crime Commission Award twice, awarded by DEA, Secret Service, and Homeland Security, all for my work as a prosecutor. I received the Saint Tammany Parish Leadership Alumni of the Year for my work in victim cases. But I have a passion for it. And a lot of times, I'm always told, Colin, you got to be nicer when you speak. But I take this job seriously. This is not a political job, even though I know we're running for office. This job is impactful in so many people's lives. You are seeing people at their lowest point for prosecution purposes and for intervention purposes. We've run a balanced office. In 2015, I had the opportunity to leave the U.S. Attorney's Office and become Mr. Montgomery's Criminal Chief, where I've spent the last nine years supervising 100 of the 140 employees, and now as acting DA, all 140 employees. At different points in time, I've changed my role depending on Mr. Montgomery's health and different needs. He had to also work with the Civil Department. I presented our entire budget to all of the council and argued the needs of that budget. I have maintained a 90% overall felony conviction rate. We accept 93% of law enforcement's felony arrests. I have run that district attorney's office's criminal division with $3 million less than the average district attorney's offices similarly situated in this state, as per expert documents provided by parish government during litigation we had regarding our budget. For those who abuse our children, we maintain a 95.6% conviction rate, and that's with the Hope House moving from in 2017, conducting 280 forensic interviews, to the year before last, doing 446. Now, we absorbed that additional volume with no additional staffing and maintained that conviction rate, not per our numbers, per the Hope House numbers. We changed a failing domestic violence department when Mr. Montgomery came into office. They had an arrest-to-conviction rate of sub-48%. Now it's 87%. We achieved that through an MOU with 16 different agencies that we organized to come together to form a better way to do it and make sure that victims are contacted within 48 hours of arrest and don't wonder what happened to their case. And what was happening before we came in, and I think I have three minutes, it'll turn into six, is that there was a paper-file management system in that office. The district attorney's office didn't even know someone had been arrested some 60 days later when a paper-file came to the office, and that's when the DA's office was first alerted. We changed the system. I track cases the moment they hit that jail, because that's where we deploy all of our victim services. Now, we're deploying our early intervention services for our specialty courts. We have five, I'm focusing just on the criminal department, five criminal specialty courts. For those who commit a felony in the state of Louisiana, 50% commit another felony. For those who complete our specialty court programs, 8% to 12%. We've also added a MOU with North Shore Technical Community College to incentivize vocational training. And so what we've done with the early intervention, it takes an umbrella approach to all of the specialty courts. And again, instead of waiting 60 days for a defense attorney to have their client arraigned and then make a request for their client to get into a specialty court, we're bringing them in front of Judge Schwartz every other week, and I'm making an offer before they make a request. You pay, as taxpayers, $30 a day to pretrial detain individuals in the Saint Tammany Parish jail. I know the decision we're going to make and what we're going to offer, the moment I glance at someone's rap sheet and the moment I glance at the charges they've committed, at a minimum, 99% of the time, I know what we're going to make an offer for. I shouldn't need to wait, and you shouldn't want us to wait, because they just sit there and languish. I can save a projected $500,000 to $1 million a year because we charge sub-3,100 defendants with felonies per year, at least a third are nonviolent, and then there's a percentage of those that are indigent and can't make bond. Why just pay for that when I can make the decision in two weeks as opposed to at least 60 days? So that's a new program we just changed. We also developed a special victims unit recently because of the volume of child sex cases that I advised you of. So now we are partnering with law enforcement from the moment of arrest and communicating. We sit in a room with a conference room and triage every single child that reports abuse, not arrested, reports abuse with Children's Hospital members, DCFS, counselors, the arresting agency, and our prosecutors, so that no child's case is missed, and we all as a group talk about things that need to be done to handle those children's cases. Now, I have personally prosecuted approximately 70 defendants through jury trials. I'm able to teach, lead, and entire team of people devoted to doing that. What I learned from Mr. Montgomery is that we are here to be public servants. And when you're called to be a servant of something, there's something inside that makes you devoted to doing it. I don't want to just be a prosecutor. I feel compelled and called to do it. It's my passion, and we are looking for people to want to do the same thing. Not build private practices on the side, not come here and want to leave, but want to serve the citizens of Saint Tammany and Washington Parish. And that's the team we have assembled right now. The average years of experience in that DA's office is about 17 years of experience, having a nice array of people that are retiring and new, and teaching those to do an excellent job. All of those cases are prioritized. Now, the politics part, I'm running against some guy who's never picked a jury one time in a criminal case as a prosecutor. He spent eight years working for Walter Reed in the misdemeanor and ticket department and building a private practice from the moment he worked there. The moment. He didn't wait till he left, the moment he worked there. That's not really being a public servant. Saying that you have litigation experience from misdemeanors and tickets is not prosecuting felonies. 55 in a 45 is impactful to nobody, okay? For the last 18 years, he's been a defense attorney, and of the 450 clients he's represented, zero felony jury trials. Not one time. Not one time did he find a client that needed him to go to the line to actually represent them and, again, be impactful in the person who hired them's life. You can't lead a group of prosecutors and teach and lead and evaluate the 3,100 felonies per year that come into office if you've never handled one. Not one. It's too important of a job. Public safety is the most important thing when asked in this residence. It's why people move here. It's why you need experienced people devoted to doing it. And you have to ask yourself, when people are applying for a job, why do you want this job? What is the experience you bring to the table? This is not Best Buy. It's not just an administrative job. There's an administrative component to it, but it's an investigative body through the grand jury, and it's a prosecutorial body. That is the primary function of a district attorney's office. Now, I've run an office honestly and cleanly out of that criminal department, and I promise you, every single one of you, that I'm going to give you everything that I got every day. And you judge people by what they've done, not what they say they're going to do. And I will give you everything that I got honestly. I will never let that office go backwards, and I will never let people run that office and make it a political lightning rod to dictate what goes on in this parish and exert power and influence where it does not belong. That I promise you. And when you walk into that Justice Center, I remind people that it's pretty hypocritical that you got convicted felon's names listed on the outside. I work for a good and honest man. We ran a good and honest office, and I'm going to continue that mission forward with your support. And I ask for your support and your vote. And thank you so much for the time, and I look forward to seeing you in the future. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Counsel? Thank you, sir.
Thank you also.
Brief service.
Thank you. We'll not be asking for another tax. Apparently, that is a very hot-button topic. Thank you so much.
We will now move to the consent calendar. Introduction of item number 2024-03-01. Oh, we've got to do the regular meeting minutes. Thanks, Joanne. Back, as I was saying, introduction of item number 2024-03-01. An ordinance of the city of Covington amending the official zoning map of the city of Covington, Louisiana to reclassify a certain parcel of land from CBD Community Business District, HDC, MUOD, Historical Downtown Covington, mixed-use overlay District to PCUD, Planned Combined Use District. We also have introduction of item number 2024-03-02. An ordinance of the city of Covington to amend the 2024 operating and capital budget. Introduction of item number 2024-03-03. An ordinance of the city of Covington enlarging the boundaries of the city of Covington, describing the property to be annexed and added there to as Lot 302 Flower Estate subdivision, Section A, Section 47, Township 7 South Range, 11 East, Saint Tammany Parish, and also classifying this property as zoning District CR, Regional Commercial, under the zoning laws of the city of Covington. Reminds me that we need to be a briefer on what we're describing. Introduction of item number 2024-03-04. An ordinance of the city of Covington authorizing the mayor to purchase on behalf of the city of Covington 1.22 acres of a 24.66 acre parcel situated in Section 21, north of the Savannah subdivision, for the construction of drainage improvements. And finally, introduction of item number 2024-03-05. An ordinance of the city of Covington authorizing the mayor to execute a drainage servitude agreement with Savannah subdivision for a drainage improvement project. I need a motion to accept the consent calendar.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Enman?
Yes.
Councilman Gaberta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Weiss?
Yes.
Councilman Barret?
Yes.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilman Botford?
Yes.
All right, regular agenda, unfinished business. Items to be voted on, public hearing in action on number 2024-02-01. This is an ordinance of the city of Covington authorizing the mayor to execute a drainage servitude agreement for Lot 2, Square 6, Division of St. John in the city of Covington. I am the sponsor. There is a underground brick drainage feature that traverses this property. The drainage feature transports water to the Mackey Creek from Gibson Street and the surrounding areas. Drainage feature is in need of repair. We desire to align the drainage feature to improve its function. The owner has agreed to grant an underground drainage servitude, and so we therefore would like the mayor to execute a drainage servitude. Does that basically cover it? Any public comment? Seen none. Any council comment? I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Need a second.
Second.
Motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I need a roll call.
Councilman Enman?
Yes.
Councilman Gaberta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Weiss?
Yes.
Councilman Barret?
Yes.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilman Botford?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Public hearing in action on number 2024-02-02. An ordinance of the Covington City Council creating Chapter 2, Article 7 of the Code of Ordinances, to establish open meetings participation procedures to facilitate participation and voting via electronic means. This is in accordance with Louisiana Revised Statute 42:17.2.1 and 42:14. I want to commend city administration, in particular Ms. Blavona, for jumping on this and being proactive rather than me read off. I'd like her to kind of explain what we're doing here.
Sure. So at the 2023 legislative session, there was legislation that was passed saying that if somebody is recognized as having an Americans with Disability Act condition, that they should be able to participate in meeting, public meetings electronically, or if they sit on a public board, we should allow them to do that. Now, there is going to be an application process. You have to notify us through a form. You have to demonstrate that you have the condition that is, that has been recognized by a doctor, and then we basically sign you up for remote access electronically.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Seen none. Any council comment?
I just have one question, I guess. When they participate electronically, they would like see us on the board screen and vote that way?
So if, yes, so we, we're going to have two different formats. One is if somebody is on a board, they can vote remotely. Another way would be for somebody that is just a member of the public that might have a question.
Okay.
So, but we've been working with IT on that, and so they have, they have a plan. I'm happy to show it to you if you're interested.
Okay. Thanks.
So this is required of all public meetings for all, every jurisdiction in Louisiana except for the legislature. So, so everybody across the board is having to do something like this.
All right. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
Need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Gaberta?
Yes.
Councilwoman Weiss?
Yes.
Councilman Barret?
Yes.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilman Botford?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Enman?
Yes.
Public hearing in action on number 2024-02-03. An ordinance of the city of Covington declaring surplus equipment owned by the city of Covington. Councilman Roberts?
Absolutely. So we've done this before. Sometimes it's a donation, sometimes it's an online auction. This is going to be an auction of stuff that has just been collected. It's sitting. Some of it's still kind of good. There's pictures of it all, but for the most part, one man's trash is another man's treasure. So there's meters and generators and just things that no longer need to sit in our service. So we surplus them, and this is just a...
They may also be broken.
Unbroken, absolutely. It's not just broken.
Outdated or no longer needed.
It's just not needed. It's sitting and either been replaced and sitting because it's, I hate to say trash, but it's not needed. So, yeah, this is just the official way of us declaring surplus equipment.
So there are things that are out of commission. They're currently not in use at all?
Yeah. Frequently, it's like IT equipment that's no longer usable because we've had updates, or it's broken equipment that we have to surplus, and somebody might want it for scraps. So we have to surplus it and then auction it.
Go ahead, Rob. Right.
Okay. Understood.
Right.
Okay. Understood.
And since it is an auction, it's probably not all broken and trash, right?
I mean, it's going to be parts, more than likely. It's broken generators, things that people would use for scrap metal, stuff like that.
All right. Any additional comments? With that being said. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
A motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
And I need a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Weiss?
Yes.
Councilman Barret?
Yes.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilman Botford?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Enman?
Yes.
Councilman Jaberga?
Yes.
All right, under new business, no items to be removed from the consent calendar. We do have an item to be voted on, which is resolution number 2024-12. A resolution of the Covington City Council confirming the capital outlay and encumbrance rollovers from the 2023 budget to the 2024 budget. Councilman Roberts?
Yeah, I'll start this off, and I'll probably lean on administration a little bit on this. But this is just funds, you know, we make a budget per year. Not all those funds get spent throughout the year, and so it has to roll over. Some of it is capital funds, some of it is incumbents' funds that we, we have POs on that has not been spent yet. So we have to do the process of making sure that those funds are allowed to roll into this year's expenditures, but it doesn't affect this year's budget.
So what happens is, once this rollover is approved, it then merges into the current budget.
Okay.
Now, we track it separately. So we can say, like, if you start with $100,000 budget in 2024, and we rolled over 20 from 2023, then we have $120,000 budget, but we can track what's a rollover and what's an original budget item.
Right.
Also, just to make a point, so capital expenditure or capital budgets per the Home Rule Charter are in place for three years, and so they automatically kind of roll anyway because they're committed for three years. So this list is an opportu, this is an opportunity for the staff to go, okay, we've completed this project. The remainder of the funds are no longer needed. We can release back to the general fund.
Right.
So, but other than that, very good explanation.
Thank you, Erin.
Question, when we have rollover, it goes just to general fund and then be reallocated to some other part of the budget?
So if the funds are not rolled over, it just goes back to the general fund?
Okay.
Yes.
But when it does roll over, it stays for what was appointed for in the first place?
Yeah. And as, if you look at the list, there are going to be some that, you see, there's still some, some funds available, and the person running the project may only need half of that to complete the project, so they might send half of it back now and keep half of it. It's just, so we go by this line by line every year. Same thing for the encumbrances.
Okay, thank you.
Any public comment? Seen none, or is there any additional council comment? I need a motion to accept.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Barret?
Yes.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilman Botford?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Enman?
Yes.
Councilman Jaberga?
Yes.
Councilwoman Weiss?
Yes.
Next is resolution number 2024-13. A resolution of the Covington City Council confirming the appointment of Trini Lucas as the District A appointment to the Covington Board of Adjustment to fill an unexpired seat. Councilman Lewis?
Thank you, thank you. I've known Mr. Lucas for a while now. Pretty much went to school together. He's a native of Covington, Louisiana. He joined the Navy in 1998. From there, sir. Um, from there, served time over in South Korea. Um, also worked, joined on the USS Grace Hopper, serving time in Hawaii. From there, he went on to, um, serve time on Operation Enduring Iraq Freedom, enlisted as a, uh, warfare specialist. Um, and his resume just goes on, let me tell you. An explosive disposal specialist from Cali, in California. Um, and then also serving, volunteering at, in the Navy Reserve, volunteering in Africa, Qatar, Pearl Harbor, um, Washington. And now I have the honor of him serving here, right here in Covington. So with that, I give to you Mr. Trinity, and thank you for coming and volunteering right here for the city of Covington.
Would you like to come up and say a few words? While you're coming up, it, it, it does occur to me that as a warfare special, specialist, the Board of Adjustment may actually need that.
How y'all doing? Um, I appreciate the honor of being here. Um, excited to be back home, as he mentioned, I've been overseas for quite a long time. Uh, I did graduate from Covington High, ninety-four, joined the military ninety-eight, been around the world. Now it's time to come back home and, um, just implement some of the human resource and some of the training that I've endured throughout this process. Glad to be back home and serve the community as much as I can. Appreciate that, too.
Well, thank you for your service and your willingness to keep serving. Council, have any questions or comments?
Thank you for your service abroad, and thank you for your future service at home.
Yeah, just like the comment that Trinity used to beat up on me in basketball at Covington High. So I still gotta get used to seeing his face again, it's missed, no, congrats, man, and thank you for your service for sure. It's great to see you.
Thank you.
Trinity, that was, it's a pretty big club.
Congratulations, we appreciate you and all that you've done for, for our country and for now our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, I need a motion to accept.
Motion to move.
I need a second.
Second.
Uh, roll call.
Councilman Lewis?
Yes.
Councilman Bogford?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Inman?
Yes.
Councilman Goberga?
Yes.
Councilwoman Weiss?
Yes.
Councilman Verrett?
Yes.
All right, we now move on to, number one, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations.
Now we move on to council district and committee reports. District A, Councilman Lewis.
All right, um, yeah, before Trinity leaves, you guys, we're gonna swear amen, just so we, let you guys know. Um, moving on, just some past events I wanna send a shout out to, the men and women of power. They held a great ball this past month, and I was honored to be in the presence of it at the Castine Center. Great job, I see one of the members here, so I'm gonna send a shout out to you guys. I really enjoyed myself. Um, another shout out to Mr. and Mrs. Lewis for, um, hosting the Entrepreneur Seminar, uh, this past week. Uh, that was another great event for our community. Um, now upcoming events, we have the I Am Enough Empowerment Conference, which has been hosted by Ashley Marissa, um, titled Why Not Me? It will be Saturday, March sixteenth, from one to four, Holiday Inn. Um, you can find tickets on Eventbrite, or you can reach out to Ms. Ashley Marissa at nine eight five two oh one nine one eight eight. Uh, another great thing coming to Uptown Covington is the partnership with Starlight Baptist Church and North Shore Tech. They're bringing free adult education, um, to the center at, at Starlight Baptist Church. For more information, call eight nine two four four six eight. I wanna give a shout out to Mr. Chuck with the Public Works. Um, lately, he's been working with me for, on a few things, and he's been very pleasant. Um, so I wanna give a shout out to Mr. Chuck. Um, and the Uptown community for sure. I can tell you since starting with the city of Covington, we've been doing a lot of work together with the council, but with the community in whole, and when I start something and I can't finish it, they just step in, you guys. Um, during MLK, we started a program with the cleanup, and the other day I went by just to check with them, and Mr. Carl was out there, you know, spusing up the building, painting it on top of the roof, doing some cleaning, and he promised he was gonna finish repairing the building and just making the area look good. So I give a shout out to that community over there, to my community, um, and I thank them for the work that they do. Um, it reminds me of a quote from Mr. Dax and Darius Rucker. Um, it's not about how you feel, but it's about what you provide. Great song, I think you guys should go listen to it. Um, I wanna remind you guys to vote this month, early voting ninth through the sixteenth. Primary is the twenty-third, and of course, I got a little history for you guys. Our first lieutenant African-American governor was Oscar Dunn. After him was Mr. Pinchback. Pinchback went on to be our first African-American governor in nineteen, in eighteen seventy-two. That was some interesting history that I learned. Our first ambulance service was started by African-Americans. It was called Freedom Ambulants in Pittsburgh. And I wanna send out some prayers to the Borny family, Bradford families, and the Brown families. They all lost some important members this past month. That's it.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Bogford, District B.
All right, uh, first off, I wanna give a shout out to Public Works for, uh, taking care of Bogota Flya Park. We had so much sand there, I think we could, uh, supply all the, uh, the sandbag filling locations throughout St. Tammany Parish. There was so much sand there. I mean, it was amazing that you guys have done a great job getting that ready, because I think Chef's Four A is coming up for here pretty soon, and it's getting there. Yeah, it's, it's looking good, so thank you for doing that. I wanna talk about the, uh, the Food Bank, uh, the February stats. They had nine hundred and sixty-four households, uh, a total of a hundred and, uh, one thousand two hundred and twenty-one boxes and eighty-two, eighty-two new registrations. Uh, the food program updates, uh, so their first distribution of Good Sams in Slidell was a success. Twenty new households were signed up, and they're currently reaching out to approximately fifty households that have turned in preliminary registrations. Events, they're hosting a virtual rock or run-walk, run, walk?
Walk.
Uh, Lenten Challenge, forty miles of running, walking over forty days. Uh, so that's going on right now. It's not too late to sign up, uh, there'll be prizes and drawings for anyone posting and tagging them. Uh, it's at runsignup.com slash forty challenges. So that's going on. Things are moving for their fortieth anniversary community celebration on Sunday, April twenty-first, from two to five P.M. at the Food Bank over here on Florida Street. Uh, they'll be, uh, they'll have some more flyers coming out soon, and they're excited about to have awesome sponsors, cooking demos, food and activities lined up is all part of the event. Uh, their golf tournament will be Tuesday, May fourteenth at Bochin. Uh, you can go to northshorefoodbank.org slash golf tournament to sign up for that. Uh, most needed items are rice and beans, as usual on that. Uh, and if, you know, this is always a low time for donations, so if anybody could do a, uh, food drive, it'd be greatly appreciated. Um, wanna remind everybody that the farmer's markets is on Wednesday at the Trailhead, and on Saturdays, right here behind the council chambers. Uh, the, remind everybody to shop local, and I don't wanna steal all the thunder about, uh, what's coming up, and I'll let the mayor discuss that. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Rob, District C.
Uh, absolutely, I'll, I'll pick up real quick off the Food Bank scenario. Ginger Conkle, if you're familiar with nonprofit work in the Food Bank, uh, moved and left an opening position there, and, uh, I want, just wanted, not that I wanna advertise jobs, but I know that that is an important piece of helping a lot of people. And so a development director is needed for the Food Bank, uh, and has some big shoes to fill, but if your heart's in the right place, you'll be able to do it. Um, go vote, thank you, Peter, for mentioning that, and then, uh, congratulations, Sam, Trinity, congratulations again. And then, uh, only thing I have really that's, that's business is, uh, if you notice a truck parked on your, your, I guess, your property, uh, they're videotaping pipelines right now, and I think you'll probably talk a little bit about that if, if you want to, uh, just to make sure what's not broken, what is broken throughout River Forest. So, uh, those guys have been riding around, just filming everything and trying to get, I guess, a collection of what is wrong with the tar cotta pipes that, that run through River Forest to make sure we can assess the damage and start fixing it up. Other than that, everything is good.
District D, Councilman Noonan.
Uh, thank you, sir. Um, first of all, Public Works, I would like to thank, uh, the guys over there. Uh, lots of events that they've been, you know, managing, and then, uh, they've had quite a few, uh, how can I say this? Uh, near emergencies, we'll stop short of calling them emergencies because they were able to manage them, but, uh, well done by them. Our police department, incredibly fast response time. Uh, I had a neighbor down the street that called, and, uh, I mean, just wonderful response time. They were, they were very, very happy with, one, the response time, two, the professionalism of our police department, and, uh, three, just the way the situation was managed, so very well done. Uh, Gallagher Park, we have a meeting coming up. Mayor, uh, Mayor Mark will be there, myself will be, I'll be there as well. That's gonna be the seventh, that's this Thursday, six P.M. at the firehouse. Uh, so put your thinking caps on and, and come, uh, share your ideas. Again, it's, uh, the crown jewel of District, you know, D, in my opinion. Um, I spent many, uh, childhood days at that park, so it means a lot to me. Uh, and then I won't say, uh, what's coming up as well, because I know the calendar's about to explode with spring activities. Uh, all I can tell you is Covington's gonna be a happening place to be. What a wonderful place to live, so that's all I got.
Good stuff. District E?
Thank you, I, I'm gonna, uh, just take a moment to thank everyone, uh, on the council for, uh, expressing your support in me and having me join you as an interim council member. I'm very honored to serve. Uh, I'm a first-generation American, uh, and my parents immigrated here from Cuba, and so I'm, actually, I realized last night, I was talking to my mom about this, she said, you're the first person to ever serve on a, you know, public body, uh, from our family since we came to Cuba, from Cuba. So I'm very, very proud of that, and, and I look forward to, uh, serving all of the residents of Covington, District D. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Very nice.
Councilwoman Weiss?
Yes, good evening. Um, just a, a quick thank you to the Covington Police Department for a little bit of an additional presence around UB Gallagher Park. I know that Councilman Inman is working along with city administration to consider some additional improvements, but just the additional presence around the park is certainly much appreciated. I also wanted to mention that the North Shore Technical Community College, with seven locations across five North Shore parishes, is hosting their ninth annual Chancellor's Scholarship Breakfast at Benedict's on March twenty-eighth. This is an event that celebrates and supports their exceptional students and their donors who support those awesome achievements. These are students recognized to have demonstrated outstanding academic achievements, leadership qualities, and are, have made a commitment to making a positive impact on their communities. Future leaders that we are all looking for. For questions regarding tickets to this Chancellor's Scholarship Breakfast or to consider sponsorship for this amazing opportunity, um, I would tell you to please call nine eight five five four five one two eight four, or send an email to n c e f at northshorecollege.edu. The entire Chancellor's Breakfast is organized by the North Shore College Enhancement Foundation. So it sounds like a great event, we could all think about getting behind. That's it for me.
Thank you very much. Well, rather than me talk about anything in particular, I just wanna say that as I look at this city council and its composition and its makeup, I could not be more pleased. I think it is a good representation of the city, and I think we're all gonna do a fantastic job, and I don't mind saying it. Um, so with that being said... Mr. Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Council President, uh, Verrett. Uh, I'm just gonna try to give a quick update on, uh, some projects. I was, uh, visiting with some of the council people, uh, during the last week, and new Councilman Goberga said, uh, well, do we have a list of all of that? And I said, well, yeah, we have a list, it's right here. And, and then after the meeting, I realized that, well, maybe doing a list would not be a bad idea. So based on your suggestion, I've made a list. Um, projects that we have underway at this time include a trace beautification project behind Lola, uh, two hundred thousand dollars for the, uh, for the beautification, but it's also turned into a drain, a major drainage project, so we're working on that. Uh, capital outlay money, we have a million dollars budgeted for the renovation or construction of our Investigations Department for the Police Department. Downtown sidewalk rehab, you'll be seeing that, uh, broke ground this week. You'll see, uh, old sidewalks coming up as we repair hazardous sidewalks, two hundred thousand. Uh, we have a grant for one point two million to repave Lockwood, New Hampshire, Columbia, Florida, and Lee Lane. But before we do that, we have to make sure that all the water and sewer below the streets are, uh, properly repaired. We have a new road striping project going on right now for twenty-five thousand dollars. We have a contract to rebuild the clock tower at the Trailhead, uh, which has rotted, and that's sixty thousand. Termite damage in the council chambers, sixty thousand. A grant for four point three million to re, uh, to repair the sewer collection system for ozone all the way to the wastewater treatment plant. We're in the process of replacing two thousand one hundred water meters at a cost of two hundred sixty thousand dollars. Uh, we need to make some decisions about rebuilding the, the bathrooms at Bogota Flya Park. Uh, we had plans done that kinda crammed a remodel in there, came in pretty expensive, and we determined that it's probably gonna be better to remove the existing bathrooms and build new. Uh, we have a M.L. Creek subsurface drainage problem, uh, out near the, uh, out near Collins Boulevard, um, subsurface, two hundred thousand dollars. We're looking at design work for a roundabout at Jefferson and Columbia at a little over a million. Thirtieth Avenue and Columbia, roundabout a million. McGree Street, new waterline under construction, two hundred fifty thousand. Bullafield Waterwell Building Rehab, if you know these buildings that have our equipment in them to operate the water wells, they now have a lot of technical equipment in them that they would not have had years ago, so they all have to be insulated and climate controlled. Uh, we have new field lights going up at the rec center for all four of the baseball fields and for the field at Tyler and Twenty-Eighth, which I refer to as the Mike Williams Field. That's at a cost of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Uh, we are, uh, adding on to and duplicating the Ronald Reagan lift station near Oak Alley. We have a grant for two point seven million to raise the lift station electric panels out of the flood zones. We have, uh, a lean drive phase two, we have a one point two million dollar road project going there. River Forest Sewer Repairs, that Councilman Roberts alluded to earlier, one point seven million. What they're doing is itemizing where the breaks are, and then they'll come back in and fix them. Interesting thing to keep in mind about River Forest is that the actual property lines are pretty far off the street curve. So, and, and thanks to all the River Forest residents that maintain all that property, because the Public Works would not be able to do it without their help. But it is a little deceiving, if somebody pulls off the curb and they're, they're in my yard, well, thank you for maintaining it, but it's sort of a public-private, uh, is that what you? That's why I was gonna say that, yeah, I've gotten those phone calls. And, uh, military boat launch, uh, that's, uh, been designed, submitted to the Corps of Engineers for their approval. They've submitted questions to our engineer or our design people, and they're going back and forth on that. The reason I, I take the time to share all of this is we have an engineering department now of, uh, of, an engineer, an engineer intern, uh, a project manager, and a, uh, project, uh, uh, project inspector, construction inspector, construction inspectors, and we have a fully staffed, or almost fully staffed Public Works Department. Those two departments are properly managing everything I just mentioned. They are properly managing everything I just mentioned. That said, there's a little bit of stress there. That's, that's, that's about all we can handle. And so I share that with the council, and I share that with the public, that when we say things like, well, can't we get football courts? And it's like, yeah, we can, but we gotta stop doing something else. And, and of course, the next one on our list is UB Gallagher, you know, doing some upgrades there. So I share that with the public, just so they know that we have so much going on. I don't wanna expand the department, I'm not asking for more employees or more money, and I'm just saying that sometimes we have to take a pause and just say, hey, let's, let's do what we're doing here for the next six months, get as much of this done as we can, and then reevaluate and see where we're at. And, and I, I just think it's good for the public to understand that, uh, a lot of what we are doing, this council, these departments, my administration, uh, if you remember a couple of years ago, I used to joke about, I'll be known as the subterranean infrastructure mayor. You know, so much of what we're doing, the general public will never, won't, won't see. And if we fix the sewer pipes correctly, you'll never know it. It's when they're not fixed correctly and they back up that's the problem. So, anyway, I just wanted to share that with you all. Other than that, all good.
I like to hear it. Council comments, questions?
Yeah, I, I actually have a few questions. The one point two million you talked about to resurface the streets, coming down Columbia, um, that's just resurface or redoing the whole street, is that the expansion of Columbia, too? I think you named several streets with that one point two million.
The one point two million is something that the council approved last year in the current budget for Phase Two of River Forest. The challenge we're having with River Forest is, it's, it's like the gentleman who lives on, uh, MLK, who wants MLK repaid, and we're, we're doing the video testing of the sewer lines and that. And he said, you haven't repaid our street in twenty years. I said, River Forest is sixty years old, it's never been touched. There is, it's never been touched. And so, so we, Leale Drive was arguably the worst street in Covington. So we have 1.2 million dollar build-out going there, yes.
Are we going to ever look, have we looked at North Taylor Street yet?
Yes, North Taylor is definitely on our radar. What we're having with North Taylor, you see all the different humps and bumps in there? We've talked about this previously, that the sewer main from ozone to the wastewater treatment plant is made out of concrete, and methane gas, which is a byproduct of wastewater, eats away at the concrete. So the sewer force main, the sewer main is collapsing, and entire blocks are starting to fall in. So we've moved that up to a priority of doing something that we've never done before that Engineer Callie Baker brought to our attention called pipe bursting, where you actually have something like a drill bit going through the center of the concrete pipe, destroying it. And while it's doing that, it's actually pulling a new pipe behind it. So we're fast-tracking that, and that'll be part of that 4.3 million grant that we got from the federal government. But that North Taylor is, is, got bumped up. That's North Taylor, the clock tower, the council chambers. We didn't ask for any of those projects, you know, but, you know, the projects that we're taking on new are like North Taylor. It's like, we got to fix the sewer line under there or the whole street's going to collapse.
Okay, thanks.
Erin?
I have a very quick heads up. So last week, we met with three contractors that are going to be doing some of the construction in downtown, at the corner of New Hampshire and Gibson. So they're going to be starting construction soon for the Southern Hotel Expansion. They've already picked up their permit. And so we are notifying businesses downtown that they're going to be hearing some pile driving. So we're just letting you guys know that we are walking around tomorrow to notify everybody. And in case anybody has any questions, you can have them call Chris Pratt.
Just, so that's going to be the Southern Hotel as well as where the star was at?
Correct.
Both lots?
Correct. Now, there will be another project where the Maritime Pilots Institute was, but it won't require any pile driving. So you're going to have three projects under construction.
One, one more question for you on a different subject. I see that we're working on agreements to solve flooding in different areas. I want to follow back on Mile Branch. Have we got anything different with Mile Branch?
So, so there are basically three, three Mile Branch projects. So which one are you referring to, I guess?
The clearing out to resolve some of the flooding, because again, like I said, I get complaints that the flooding backs up to the homes. So is there any kind of progress on how we resolve that? I think the last time, there was some kind of agreement with the city and the parish?
The agreement between the city and the parish was focused on erosion.
Okay.
Didn't really have anything to do with the flooding. The backup that you're, that residents are bringing to your attention is called, is a, when the, when the Mile Branch is full, the lateral ditches going in from the side cannot flow. And so there's nothing, there's nothing we can really do about that. We have, myself, Naugurith, Pacey McWilliams, and some others, Councilman Inman, have all been carefully observing Mile Branch for the past year or two, and have noted that when we have a rain event, like we did at the end of January, of basically a minor flood, Mile Branch is flowing as fast and hard as it can. When I went through, back through it in the last week of January, and I accessed Mile Branch at every point I could, all the way from the Outfall, south of 11th Avenue, all the way to Collins Boulevard, there's basically no blockage in there. There's, there's a little bit, but there's nothing, there's nothing that's stopping the water from flowing. It's flowing, it's, it's flowing fast and furious. I often joke that Volkswagen's float, and if you threw a Volkswagen in there, it'd go all the way to Lake Ponchartrain. So it's, the complaint I got from property owners along the Mile Branch was always the same. Erosion. Don't send us any more water any faster because we're already, there's a commercial structure at 21st and Mile Branch that already has water eddying underneath it, eroding it out. So, so the, but, but when the, when the Chafunka River is full, the Mile Branch won't flow. And when the Mile Branch is full, the lateral ditches, and this is not just the Mile Branch, but this really refers to all drainage tributaries.
Yeah, and I think also, Erin, and I've worked on this, the Watershed Initiative, and you've alluded to this quite a few times, too, is retention, detention.
It's all about detention upstream.
Upstream of us.
What you want to do is you want to do detention upstream, capture the water, and release it downstream more slowly. You want the one, the bottom one-third of your tributary, in this case, the Chafunka River down by Madisonville, you want that to go out into the lake as quickly as possible. The middle one-third, which I'll call around the I-12 bridge area, you want that to flow in kind of naturally. But the upper one-third, what all engineers and planners agree upon is, you want to put in detention. You want to capture that water, release it more slowly, which gives the downstream area an opportunity to flow out before that wave gets there. In our case, we actually do have detention happening at Collins Boulevard because from Covington Point to Collins Boulevard, there are only two culverts, five foot square culvert, almost big enough for, big enough for a man my size to stand up there. But, but there's two of those. Everything beyond that, but that water's flowing as fast as it can, and it holds it right there along Collins Boulevard in that, in that space and releases it downstream.
Thank you.
I wanted to-
We don't have no legal issues in the city? I'm just picking.
Look, I wanted to piggyback off of something that the mayor said. We went out to Coop Drive to discuss removing the trees that were from Ida. And one of the things that Mayor Mark did was he went up and actually discussed removing the trees up north of 40 on the Folsom side. And the idea was, again, to restrict some of that flow coming down into Covington, just simply because the quicker it gets here, the faster things are going to fill up, and the more people, you know, could be impacted by, by a flooding event. So when we speak of staging it all the way down to the river itself, our neighbors up north, that's, that's quite important that that water is able to be held and detained naturally in that area. I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, and that's part of the Watershed Initiative. That's $2 billion that they're looking, doing hydrological studies in that area to determine where, in fact, to put these retention, detention ponds to slow it down before it gets to us and max out.
Anything else? Next meeting April 9th, we're adjourned.